I'm Dare Thompson. I'm the president of this three county league Duchess, Ulster and Orange. Orange just joined us a while ago and it's been great to have them too. Um, I've been state board president. I've been in leagues in four, four states. And um, it's just been a, a whole life thing. And I'm wearing a button that says not for men only. Fifty years ago, we let men in, so. Anyone are, we have a four, a four word um, mission statement. Empowering voters, defending democracy. So it's, it's a full job. All right. But you and the people and there are important. So Jay, would you introduce who you are and um, start us off?
Sure. Thank you for inviting me. So I, I'm Jay Warona. I serve as deputy executive director and general counsel of the New York State School Boards Association. Um, and you know, we're an organization. It's a voluntary organization for school boards throughout the state. Just so you all know, there's about seven hundred of them. Um, and districts don't have to join, but I think they see the value because we represent probably about ninety-six or seven percent of the school districts in this state. And, and what we do in essence is to um, help uh, provide assistance to individuals who get on the school board. There's no aptitude test that anybody takes uh, to be a school board member. There are certain qualifications uh, that one needs, uh, but those qualifications are basically the qualifications of being a voter. Um, and um, and in essence, we, we want to make sure that they have a broad range of um, understanding uh, as to what this job is all about. And when I say job, it's unpaid uh, and, and for the most part. Uh, and, and some of our um, large cities, there is um, some moderate pay that's provided or modest pay that's pay uh, that is provided. But for the most part, uh, individuals um, who serve on school boards throughout the state are really uh, engaging in the best uh, form of altruism possible. They're trying to um, in, ensure that their institutions are, are going to provide greater levels of um, student achievement for all of the students. Um, I, I think as Dare said, um, this is about democracy. Um, I think grassroots democracy is i- is school boards uh, because they represent the public. Um, and you know, it is important that when they do so, uh, they're doing so um, without really being single agenda oriented, right? They should really want to share the viewpoint that it's all about what the kids need. People can have differing views as to what that is, but if they get on the school board to right a wrong that they feel that, that, that had been uh, cast against them. Uh, perhaps they were an employee in the district and they don't like the superintendent and they figure I'll get on the board and I'll be that person's employer. You know, that really wouldn't be what, what, what great school board service is all about. It's really about making sure we make the world a lot better for our kids. Um, and in addition to that, the last thing I'll just mention of what we do um, is we, we um, have conversations with the legislature, the board of regents and other legislative leaders about what constitutes good public policy in terms of legislation and regulations. And we, we make sure that our viewpoints on behalf of all of those people that we represent um, is provided. And when I said there's seven hundred districts, there's about five thousand school board members in the state of New York. Uh, they are the greatest number of publicly elected officials in the state. Um, so you know, their numbers are, are important to take note of. Um, and um, I've been in this job for close to forty years and I've stayed here because of the profound respect I have for the individuals um, who serve uh, their school boards.
That's under five minutes. Why don't you just say what training you offer? Because it's at some point, they should know that if they serve, they will have to do some, but also probably people go to you for information that they're not required to go to you for, so.
Yeah, we have a staff of about fifty-five people, um, some of whom are uh, like me, they're attorneys and we provide legal information uh, to, to boards. Um, there is training that boards of education are required, board members are required to have in, under New York state law, there is mandatory governance training, which is kind of uh, it was provided for newly elected board members. They have to take that training within the first year of service. Uh, it is a condition precedent to being able to stay on a board. Uh, and the other form of training um, is a fiscal um, fiscal training so that they understand um, really what budgeting is all about and how they can manage um, and, and, and watch the store as it were, so that um, public taxpayer dollars, which people work super hard for uh, are best protected. So those are trainings that are required. But in addition to that, to answer your question, Dare, we, we have trainings uh, that we provide um, all of the time. Many of those trainings are free. Uh, we, we put on webinars uh, that we are, you know, providing to our members of really cutting edge issues. Um, and, and, and a lot of our training are, are, are offered virtually, but they're also offered in person because coming out of COVID, we realized that the most intelligent way of providing training is to make it uh, easily accessible for people. Having said that, school board members um, are a, a group of individuals who, who very much like to be together. So we offer in-person training as well.
And this is, I got to experiment with him. Um, this is just a warning that you're, you're on your last half minute. And I'm, again, I'm, these times are really loose, just informal to get everybody um, moving along here. And you don't need to take it all, but I knew Jay would need to talk about that training at some point. So, all right, um. Nora, I've known Nora a long time and I'm starting to call her another name.
Hi, my name is Nora Scher. Some of you may have run into me. I know I've met Jay several times now. Um, and, and some of the other people who have been on school boards, we may have bumped into one another at one thing or another workshop, but um. The, the first thing at, that I, I wanted to mention was Jay touched on it. Why are you running for the school board? Uh, because if it's a one issue, um, you know, bone of contention that you have with the district, you, you shouldn't bother. Uh, because as a school board member, you're going to be looking at the district um, from, as they say, thirty thousand feet. You're gonna be looking at every aspect of what makes that district run. And you're going to have to confront all sorts of issues, legal issues, personnel issues, financial issues and curriculum issues, you know, student discipline, all sorts of things. So you should really get into it because you want to make it a better place for the kids. The kids are a future, you know, the future of the community. So um, I'm coming from a, a perspective of thirty-eight years as an educator before I ran for the school board. I retired in twenty-ten. But I worked at all levels. I worked at elementary, middle and high school, high school for the longest. I really loved being there. I had the flexibility to work the whole spectrum. I'm, I'm a special educator. Um, and I, you know, I had, had the privilege of working with the, the whole spectrum uh, of abilities at the high school. Um, so I stayed there for twenty-two years. When I retired in twenty-ten, I had thirty-eight years and I had been very active in uh, um, the running of the school and the district too. I, I um, actually got my feet wet with policy writing when um, the attendance regulations were changed way back around the turn of the twenty-first century. And um, the school district then became a lead educational agency and we had the ability to kind of craft our um, attendance policy a little more. I worked on, on um, district committees. And I continued that when I joined the board. I was um, elected in twenty-eleven. So I'd been retired for uh, almost a year uh, when, when I was elected. And one of the first tasks that we our board was faced with then was the selection of a new superintendent. And we did get input from all the stakeholders, the, you know, different groups in the district. And that was, that was uh, a real privilege to be included in that because if you have a good superintendent, um, that's half the battle. You know, the board should work on fostering a good relationship with the superintendent. Should be very, very particular about who you hire. And then you're, you're charged also with evaluating them on an annual basis. Uh, it's good to have open lines of communication with your superintendent and be supportive of him or her uh, in public. So we'll get into that a little later with probably some of the, the questions and answers. Um, when I joined the board, I uh, got involved in a lot of the committees because I was retired and I had maybe a little bit more free time than some of my colleagues who were still employed um, in, in school districts and colleges and, you know, in their own businesses. And so um, I would recommend that you get your feet wet if you, if you do run for the board, anybody who's considering it. Become very knowledgeable uh, with one of the committees. Every school district has standing committees. I um, served on the facilities committee uh, for eleven years. I was on the board for twelve, served on the facilities committee for eleven years and issued in a referendum. I was privileged to work with the architects and the construction management firm very closely. And we issued in, we passed a referendum in December of twenty-thirteen, broke ground in twenty-fifteen, renovated Kingston High School. So anybody who's been by Broadway can see uh, the fruits of that particular involvement. Um, audit and finance is a really good committee to get involved with because the school budget is very often bigger than the budget for the town or city that you live in. And it's very, a lot of it is, you know, you don't really have any say because it's personnel driven. You're talking about salaries and benefits, but for the portion that you do have, you need to be involved as a trustee with setting priorities for the district.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Is it five minutes? Okay, sorry.
People to, to us fini- finish up. There's so, so many questions I'm already thinking of.
Okay. Well, I want to say that it's been an honor. It was an honor to serve. I decided uh, last year in June that, well, in the spring, not to run again because I now had fifty years in and I think it's good to get new ideas, new, you know, perspectives in. So I, I didn't run. I officially retired for real. So um, you know, I'll still stay involved and go to board meetings on occasion. I'm not gonna look over their shoulders. I wish them all the best.
And, and her name is, it's an email there, so you can't see her whole name, but it's Nora Scher. And she's a league member and a wonderful league member. We're so privileged to have her. So she, she agreed to do this right, right away. All right. And um, all our speakers are now here. Um, Rick is, that's Rick. Yes. Recognize you. Good, good to have you here with us. And we've just done the first two speakers and we're going to go to Guido and then it'll be you, Rick. So Guido, say.
Hi, how are you? Uh, my name's Guido Garberino. I'm a relative new board member in Pauling, New York. I'm uh, finishing out my second year on the school board. Thank you for having me. Um, I'll talk a little bit about my background and why I joined the school board and uh, what that's been like so far. Um, I'm actually a science teacher myself. I've been teaching for twenty-eight years. Um, and I, I served as department chair for, for some of that time and I currently run a science research program in the high school I teach, which is uh, Mamaroneck High School in Westchester. I also have a degree in uh, school leadership. So I do have a little bit of, you know, educational um, background to bring to bear on uh, being on the school board. Two years ago, we had uh, four seats open in, in my district, which was, you know, a, a rela-, you know, kind of an unprecedented number of seats at one time. And we had a large number of candidates running. And it seemed like that was a, an important time to get involved. So I ran for the school board and got elected. You know, I know that I have three, I've, I have three children that have gone through the Pauling schools, uh, one in college, two stone school, and they've had some really excellent experiences in the district. They've really uh, benefited from the schools. And I know that in a small school district in particular, offering those kinds of experiences, those kinds of programs that benefit kids is, is work that requires the support of an effective school board, strong leadership and a supportive community. So um, I thought that to prop up that kind of work that was happening in our schools uh, was, it was an important time to get involved. Having joined the board, it's, it's been very interesting so far. You know, I knew going in that it was a huge responsibility. And as I've, you know, ha- gained experience on the board, I, I, I understand that even more and, and it makes the work that much more important. You know, I know that, you know, we're, we're responsible as uh, as uh, Nora was saying earlier, you know, we adopt the budget, we hire the superintendent, we evaluate the superintendent, we negotiate contracts, we grant tenure, we make lots of important decisions about all different aspects of school districts oversight. Um, you know, when difficult issues have emerged, we have to work together to help to guide the district towards solutions. Um, sometimes, you know, we come from different perspectives and have to work together to come to those solutions, sometimes on, on difficult issues. Um, and it's important to be able to work with others, you know, lots of different personalities, serve on school boards and that's great. It brings a lot of different perspectives that helps to approach problems and, you know, come up with solutions we wouldn't come up with on our own. Um, you know, I've got a fuller appreciation of the complexity of the work that goes into the operations of the district on a day-to-day basis, as well as the long-range planning. That's always ongoing. You know, we have a um, a capital bomb project that's uh, in phase two out of three in our district. And I've gotten to see how that was, you know, planned and then presented to the public and voted on. And now being implemented with, you know, the work contractors and um, you know, all the different updates we get on that constantly, very interesting. And then we get to see the community come out and enjoy what, what we've been able to uh, create together, which is a beautiful stadium uh, for us, for our student athletes to, to use year round. It's been, it's been absolutely terrific. It brought the community together in a great way. You know, I see how the budgeting is a year-to-year planning process where long-range goals, long-range initiatives are planned out long-term through the um, you know, operating within fiscally responsible uh, parameters under the tax cap, but also planning strategic use of reserves so that we can uh, you know, fund the programs we want to in an ongoing way, uh, you know, as uh, economic conditions change. Uh, you know, that, that's a challenge. And I see the board's goal or board's role uh, of supporting the administrators and doing that work. And also, I think perhaps most important.
One minute. So yeah, I was gonna say you could stop there if you want to, but yeah, go ahead and finish.
I, I think the most important thing I've come to realize is that as school board members, you, we, we really don't act as individuals anymore, that we only can act when we're acting as a member on the board. And we have no authority individually to act or communicate on behalf of the board. And that's a really important distinction. That's become very, you know, very clear through the training we've taken and also just serving on the board.
I think, I think the previous speakers were alluding to that too a little bit, but that's so important. All, all right, Rick, um, you're, you're up and glad you made it. Oh, I think maybe you're muted. Yes, you're muted. And it's Rick Keller Coffee, because he has initials there too.
Boy, total rookie mistake. I started talking when you're muted. So first of all, I, I appreciate everyone being patient and Dare, thanks for inviting me in the first place. Um, I think what people are talking about is sort of, you know, their story, how they got involved and so on.
Well, you may not have seen the memo. Yeah, it's, that's basically it or anything you really want to say.
Okay. Um, so I uh, taught in Kipsey City School District for thirty years and uh, throughout, you know, in those years, you see all kinds of good things happening and then not so good things happening. Um, I, you know, I'm one of those nerds that likes uh, process and how things work and what, you know, what's the reason for this and that. And so uh, watching the board from the outside gives you all kinds of impressions. Um, but when I retired and lived in a different district and decided to run in the Weebetuck District, um, you know, I'd seen lots of acrimony uh, among board members at certain times and then lots of uh, cooperation and good feelings at other times. And uh, I tell you, it was really nice in Weebetuck. I'm fortunate enough that the eight years or so that I was there, uh, there was just terrific synergy with the superintendent. Board members got along, as mentioned, all different points of view and perspectives and opinions, but uh, got along really well. And that's, that's absolutely key. Um, as you can imagine, working in a group uh, and having people be polite and civil to each other and, and working towards one, one goal. Another uh.
Well, Rick, would you just say where Weebetuck is? Because it's um, there are people from Orange and Ulster too. It's pretty far.
Yeah, yeah, Weebetuck is uh, way over east next to the uh, Connecticut border. Um, it's one of the, well, same as Pauling. Pauling's way over Connecticut border as well. Um, so one of those uh, areas of Duchess County that are usually forgotten even by people in the eastern part of the county, western part of the counties, I should say. Um, and uh, small towns, lot of farms, uh, beautiful scenery, beautiful environment, um, and small populations, usually uh, small school populations. Um, so, so another thing I think people find uh, besides the learning, the learning curve that Guido mentioned uh, that uh, you know, all sorts of things to learn about. You probably didn't think much about building projects before, as you referred to. Um, and bit budgets and how they're uh, uh, put together and reserve funds and all those kinds of details, as well as teacher contracts and, and all kinds of things. Um, and so there's a learning curve for a lot of people. Unfortunately, I had served in the county legislature and had a pretty good background in, in all those components, just geared towards uh, a county government as opposed to a school government. Um, and so related to that, um, I think a lot of people have to get used to and comfortable with the uh, your role. And it sounds like a couple of people have talked about this, that staying in your lane and the, the, the power and authority that you have is, is limited. First of all, you can't go off individually and do all sorts of things um, and say things and, and you, you're working as one. And uh, uh, even if sometimes you may not agree or be completely on board, um, you're, you're working as one group and the decision of the group, you, you're, you're basically agreeing to go with, um, or at least not speak against. Um, and uh, staying within your lane of uh, things you may be interested in. You know, and this is a pretty common thing. A person came on our board who was very interested in sports, right? A pretty common thing, very interested in sports. And um, increasing sports choices and quality of facilities and so on and so forth. And when they came and learned how things really work, they realized that, you know, that, that, that may happen, but there's a lot of steps for that happening, not just because now you're on the board and you can, you can make it happen. Uh, you know, like that. So um, you know, other things, board goals, board, board policies, again, things you probably never thought of, but and sometimes people find kind of boring, but there are things that need to, to happen and, and uh, be healthy on the board for the, go to the school district. And uh, in our group, you know, we talked a lot about what's good for kids. We, 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 it's a constant part of conversation uh, in public and in private. And of course taxpayers as well. And then that balance between, you know, what you would love to have for children, what has to happen for children and what, what's available and what's possible. Um, and I, I also um, uh, I would just want to mention uh, the School Boards Association that Jay is here from. I would, I consider he probably doesn't know this, but one of my early mentors in the school board world, um, you and I have had conversations uh, over the years, you along with millions of other people too, I'm sure. But uh, said a lot of wise things and, and uh, has taught me a lot in uh, in the school world, school board world. And also a shout out for the School Boards Association. What a huge resource for uh, boards throughout the, throughout the state. So Jay, I think you have not spoken yet. Um, and so.
No, he's coming, he's good, he's. Coming back to him with, with a couple of questions.
Okay, good, good, you're good. Um, yeah. So I also want to speak very, very highly of Jay and the organization as a part of.
Yeah, that's, it's comforting to know that organization is there if you're coming on as a new t- new uh, board member. I, oh, I, what I was gonna come back to you importantly is what does somebody do? Because we don't have a district clerk here. I spoke to a number of them and they're all either on vacation, which was a few cases, or else had other commitments tonight. And, and so I finally thought, okay, I know Jay knows this. So let me just have you say, what do you do when you want to run for the school board? Where do you go?
You would generally contact your district clerk, even though unfortunately we can't give that specific information tonight because you don't have a district. But even if you had a district clerk, um, the um, information might be different from district to district. And they would, they would give you all the paperwork that you would need in terms of your petition. They'd tell you when the deadline is in the district. Uh, and they would walk you through that, that process. So that really would be your primary person. Otherwise, you can certainly call our organization as well, uh, or go onto our website because we have some information on that as well.
So everything they have really comes from you and, and that would be just as good a course?
Well, it would be, but there's individual differences from district to district. So I think it really would be even smarter to make sure you connect directly with that district clerk. We're, we're more at thirty thousand feet, you know?
If you're interested in running, you can contact your um, school board office, you know, uh, and ask for the district clerk and they'll, they'll be able to tell you. But um, NISBA has a wonderful resource online that they prepared.
Right.
Complete with videos, you know, um, and, and bullet points about what sort of things you should consider from the signatures that you have to obtain, who's qualified to sign on a petition? Um, who's qualified to run for board? You know, some, some idea about establishing um, a platform that you want to run on and no one issue, that's not a good idea. And if you're, if you're there to, you know, pick a bone with somebody, do it somewhere else. Don't do it on the school board because the school board is far too important to get bogged down with single issues. There are so many things that you have to consider. Also, um, the um, finance, you know, what you can spend on campaigning. It's not much and most people don't spend a penny. They don't, you know, they rely on, on connecting with people. Correct, Jay?
Yeah, and, and I, to your point, you know, we do have a lot of information on our website. Would Dare ask the question. I thought she was um, speaking about the person who's already committed to running, right? They're not looking to see what the job's about. They just want to get, they want papers filed. So that would be calling the district clerk. But you're absolutely right. Our website certainly could help because we do have videos. We have a lot of information about what's involved in the, in the job. Um, and, and it, and it, it, it places people in a position to be very um, you know, introspective to decide whether this really is for them or not, to your point.
And, and the district clerk could tell you how many signatures you need to get for a given district. I know small cities, they say a hundred uh, signatures, but our board clerk always says get a hundred and fifteen because some people will be eliminated because they signed your petition and they're not in your district or they're not registered to vote. I mean, there could be any number of reasons. You don't want to be eliminated from running uh, uh, for the school board because somebody, you didn't qualify because you didn't have the right number of signatures. Um, so I don't know what it is for towns and bigger cities, but small cities is a hundred. And um, and, and the petitions are due May first this year because it's twenty days prior to the um, the vote on the budget and also for the referendum and the board trustees. And it's the twenty-first this year. I think it's Tuesday, May twenty-first. It's always the third Tuesday in May.
I think that's.
Dare, I don't, I don't know if um, uh, well, I think it's also worth mentioning in a small school district like um, northeast or Weebetuck, same thing. It was only twenty-five signatures was. So if a hundred sounds intimidating, then it varies from district to district. Um, also, I think um, uh, Ms. Scher, I, I want to uh, sort of mention something tangentially about what an important uh, what an important role being on our school board is. Um, you know, all these kids are relying on you, neighbors are relying on you, taxpayers are relying on people who don't have kids. And um, one other thing that's worth mentioning, it should be apolitical also, completely apolitical. I know there've been points around the uh, I'm sorry, situations around the, the country where people have used this as a springboard for political careers or they just have an axe to grind. I'll use your phrase. And uh, it, it's not the place for that. It is just not the place. Um, I, I felt I came with a, a good perspective as a, as a retired teacher. Um, of course, people who have kids in the, in the district, terrific resource. And then sometimes people who just are local business people, didn't have their kids there and didn't know education, but they have a different perspective. So um, yeah, I, I'm throwing in a couple of things there. And Dare, before I forget, I thank you for putting this together. This is terrific. I appreciate this idea and, and the following through. So I'll stop.
I know the districts, um, uh, I forget who it was. Was it, maybe it was you who said the, the Duchess County does this really? Yeah, it was you.
Yeah.
And, and has your own mini NISBA, you know, just for Duchess County. And um, they sent, put things on and we'd been hearing about that in other districts too. But the more the better and what we're hoping to do. And so far, this is, you know, this would be very useful just to put up on our website and I'm going to try to get that up as quickly as possible. So people can hear these personal stories because those are really helpful. And I, I want to mention, Guido, your, your district clerk is one I contacted first because she calls us every year in January, maybe, maybe February, but it's always very early. And she wants to know when we are free to moderate for that district, not, and not many districts call us. I mean, they, we, and we can't do them all. So they're really smart if they call us early and we, so often somebody calls desperately to get a candidate's night together. And um, we say, sorry, we've got, you know, they're all coming at the same time, right before the, the vote. And um, we, we can't do them all. We want more moderators, by the way. If you know people who'd be good moderators, we'll train them. But um, anyway, Peggy calls up and then, and then she'll often call me back. And this raises another question. Um, and she'll call, can say we have no, no new candidates this year. You know, we either um, the incumbents are all running or whatever, but sometimes you have a whole bunch of them. So why is it hard to get them or easy to get them? It would be interesting to know what causes that to happen. Any of you, any special perspective?
Dare, I would also say this is sort of like one of the reasons why I reached out to you guys was one of the founding, people would end up calling the board of elections, trying to understand how to run for a school board. And prior to like trying to just call a school board clerk, I would go on their websites to see if there's any access to information on their website as to how to run. Uh, and even while we just sat here, like I looked up for surrounding school districts to see if there was information on their website about how to run for school board. And it does seem like there's a little bit of a, a wall there where this information simply isn't available or accessible on their websites. So I mean, I would definitely encourage everybody, if you are interested or if you are trying to run, try and go on your website for your school district and see if that information is available. Uh, one thing we have to do from the board of elections perspective in regards to other elected offices is we have to post how to run for office on our website. And I think if you were to go to voteulster.com, you would see uh, If you were to go to voteulster.com, you would see a great example of what we do to help educate individuals. On how to run, uh, for office. So I, I mean, I just encourage you to reach out to those school districts. Follow up with them and ask them to make sure that this information is available on their website so that other individuals can. Find it easily accessible to make that decision if they want to run or not.
You all are lucky, you were, who are listening, you know, to go to Jay and his organization is, but, but, um. Do most of the clerk, Jay, do you think most of the clerks would send them to you? Would they, I mean, what, what do you know about what they're doing by training?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, it depends on what the question is, right? I mean, yeah, it, it, you know, if, if they, if they are interested in. Uh, what would constitute, um, the value of school board service, they may send them to us because. We would be able to provide them with that kind of global view. If however, the person's question really pertains specifically to, you know, how to fill out the petition. Um, some of the information that was just discussed before, hey, make sure you get. Uh, more than, than the, the, the mandatory number because you know, if something, someone's invalidated, you could lose. Your ability to, to run. I mean, those are things certainly the clerk could answer. Um, so I, it really depends on what the, uh, the issues are, but we, we are here, uh. Uh, standing ready to assist anyone who is interested in school board service because as. Has been discussed throughout this, uh, this evening so far, um, there's nothing greater than, than serving the next generation. Uh, because quite frankly, that's all we got, right? As we get older, we, we got to make sure they're at the ready. And, 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 and a wonderful education for them, um, i- is really what this entire enterprise is all about.
All right. Well, I raised a few questions here, but let's hear from anybody who's harboring a question and wants to ask. And by the way, um, uh, um, John, raise your hand again, John Quigley. Um, he's, if you weren't here at the beginning, I did say who he was, but he's with the, um, our Ulster County Board of Elections and. I live in Ulster.
If you go, if you go to the NISBA, the state site, you can always get information for how to run for a school board, but. Um, I would have to put a word in for our, our board clerk. Um, and I imagine most other board clerks are doing this. Just before the petitions are going out, they're posting something on their website. If you go to the Kingston District. If you go to the homepage, you're going to see running for the school board right there. And you can click on that and get a lot more information.
Doing that, right? Were you doing that? Is that what you were doing?
Yes, they were one of the ones that did pass the test.
Did you find it?
Yes.
I've had trouble finding.
I had to put a good word in. Well, it's not there, it's, it wouldn't be there all the time. They would put up, you know, they, they do things monthly. And so it would be, you know, what's most current. So because the petitions are going to be going out and they're due May first, it's up there now.
Certainly, I, I, yeah, I personally, and I'm sure all of us would love to hear questions from the group that, that's listening. Um, and if not, then I would, uh, well, I'm just going to offer that running for school board, of course, there, there's the petition element. Um, there's also the thinking about yourself, right? Do you want to devote the time? What does it actually involve? What sort of decisions are you going to be involved with? Are those the kinds of things that you feel comfortable doing? Also realizing that in some districts, you're going to be in the grocery store and someone's going to pull you aside or at the soccer game and. Someone's going to be giving you an earful. What happened? Why aren't you doing that? And you know, of course you can explain as best you can and certain things that are in discussed just among board members and superintendent or. Whoever's invited in the executive session are private or not, not private, but they're, um. Uh, you, you can't talk about in public, can't talk about them with anyone outside of that group and in that time. Um, and, but people are going to want to know and maybe you know the answer, but you just can't. It's frustrating. They're not satisfied. So if, if. You, you know, if you're up for that sort of thing and that's, that's not everyone, right? There are plenty of people who. And they're not harassed or harangued or anything like that. If anything, to get things, I, I've gotten things, you know, thank you for serving. I know it's a tough job, you know, and, and so on and so forth. The other thing is the, in terms of, uh. Uh, the practical part of running for the school board, I, I was fortunate enough to be part of an election where they were literally looking for people. Right? And so there was no campaigning, there was nothing. And, uh, I got, you know, more than one vote or I got one vote. And so. I was in, there was no one else running. And that, every district has that every so often. And then other times where there were six or seven people running for two spots. Um, and so because of my situation and my, my background of running for office before, I decided to go around and knock on doors. And got a list of people who voted in the last, uh, school board election and went around and knocked and I had a little palm card, it's called to. Tell, you know, give people a biography of myself and maybe a statement why I think, uh, uh, you should vote for me. And, uh, it was terrific, met a lot of people, you know, the effort of you doing that stands out for people that you're doing that is, uh, is, uh. Something they appreciate usually. Um, I did have one person, I thought it was interesting. I handed them the card and introduced myself. And, uh, they said, are you for raising taxes? And I said, well, no, no one's for raising taxes if they don't have to. And they tore it up in my face. And, uh, and of all the doors I've knocked on in my different histories, um, I, I was irked. I was really like, who's this woman tearing it up? Literally in my face. And I said, well, uh, you know, taxes are necessary. And she said, well, if you're not willing to raise taxes for kids. Then I don't want to vote for you. It was a complete reverse. Instead of being mad about taxes, she wanted taxes. Uh, that served kids more. And so you get all sorts of responses, right? It's, I love meeting people. And so if you like that too. Um, then that, you know, that's possibly the way to go. Um, maybe you send something out in the mail to people. As mentioned before, that there's a limit on how much you're allowed to spend. A lot of people spend no money at all. Maybe they're just, you know, they know people in the fire department or, you know, they know a lot of other, uh, families and so on. Um, so the, the, the sort of, uh, the practicality of running for office can include those sorts of things as well. Spending your own money for one thing or another. And then of course, once you're on the board, I'm sure you'll get to this, there are trainings that you require to take with. With NISBA, um, and so on, but that's a different story. Just getting on the board, there are other steps as well, your internal component, the, um. The signatures and then if there's other things involved too.
Yeah, I want, I really wanted to hear somebody talk about running for office because it's, um. Uh, that would strike me as something that a lot of people wouldn't want to do. They would be one thing if they ran and filled an empty seat and could just walk right in. But another thing to have to go out there and push yourself. And there was the last one in, in Pauling had eleven people.
Wow.
Believe it. And, um, fortunately one didn't show up on candidate's night, so we only had ten to go through. But I've never seen that before. Um, and that was during, you know, right after the pandemic. So, yeah, Nora.
Yeah, uh, well, I have seen that before. The first time I ran, there were fourteen. So, yeah. You know, and, and a lot of times it's because of an issue. People come out because of an issue, but that's not why you shouldn't run. I, I wanted to speak to something about communication. Yeah, people do, do stop you in the grocery store, you know, they'll stop you at the doctor's office. They'll stop you anywhere and want to talk about stuff. You have to be careful because the, you're entitled to your own opinion, of course. But you have to be very specific that you're, you know, actually offering your own opinion, not the opinion of the board because you don't have any authority. As a single board member, whether you're an officer or not, to speak for the whole board. You have to have that discussion with the board and. Even if you're the president of the board, and I, I was the president for five years in Kingston, vice president for two. You need to make sure you clear it with all of the trustees or the majority of them, that, you know, this is the position of the board. And it's always a good idea to speak with one voice, you know, people are going to write emails to everybody. But maybe it's a good idea to say, you know, I'm forwarding this to the superintendent, I'm forwarding this to. You know, the head of the, the, um, language arts department for comment because that would be. Appropriate for them to comment on it. And if it's looking for the opinion of the board, that discussion has to be had at the board level. And Jay can touch on the only things that can be discussed in an executive session. There's only a few of them. Everything else is public. But what happens in executive session. Stays an executive session. And it, that's cause to impeach a trustee if they're discussing things outside of executive session. That were only discussed in executive session. So maybe Jay, you could touch on what things can be discussed.
Yeah, I want to say one thing first and, and then I'll certainly.
And thank you for that.
I think I know.
Yeah, we have the wrong date up on our.
That's what I, I was going to insert that.
April twenty second is that date. Um. The first thing I wanted to, um, say, um, in concert with what Nora is talking about is those persons who. Want to change things in the district, God bless them all, right? But they may be advocates, right? And they really should retain that, that illustrious position and not get on the board because, um. When they're on the board, based on the things that, that Nora talked about, they're going to be very constrained. Um, and we certainly don't want any citizen to feel constrained about the voice that they're going to be providing. But to your point, Nora, about people approaching you, you know, in the supermarket, um, they're going to want you to, to talk to them. But these same people who may have an objection, let's say to their child being improperly, uh, in their estimation disciplined. Um, there could be an appeal to the entire Board of Education as to whether there, that particular student was. Um, disciplined appropriately and, and then you would be serving in a quasi judicial. Role to decide whether you're going to uphold the superintendent's determination. So even in having that conversation. You're going to place yourself imperiled, uh, to have to recuse yourself or not be able to vote. So. My, my point simply is, and Nora brought up all these great points, you know, keep your role as an advocate separate. Uh, and, and, and don't run for the board if that's what you want to do. If you want to be part of that group, um, please run, uh, and, and, and be part of them. In terms of your, your question about executive session, yes, anything that is said in an executive session. Uh, has to be confidential. You're absolutely right. A board member could be removed from office for disclosing confidential information. The specific matters that are, are, uh, you're allowed to go into executive session would be. You know, discussions about real estate matters, right? Because if you're going to sell your school building, you're not going to disclose to everybody how much money you're willing to, to get for it because. Your citizens are perhaps going to get less money that way. Um, any, any conversations about safety with respect to law enforcement, that would all be. In private, there's a catchall phrase for personnel decisions. If you're going to be discussing the possible termination. Of a person or demotion or even a hiring of a person, uh, that would be an executive session as well. Um, and. Um, you know, the medical history of all of your employees certainly would not be disclosed, uh, as, as well. So there's just a certain, a, a number of. Matters that, um, you can go into executive session. And quite frankly, not that it matters, uh, for purposes of tonight, but the only thing the Board of Education could ever vote on in executive session. Is to prefer charges against a tenured instructor, uh, if they wanted to start that disciplinary process. Otherwise, it's just for discussion only. Uh, and it would be only those topics. I hope that's responsive, Nora, to your, your question.
Oh, that's wonderful. And I, I want to put a, a, a plug in here for the law conferences. They are wonderful. They're invaluable. So. Anybody who is on the board and hasn't gone to one of them, please do avail yourself of that. And anyone who's considering running. Should definitely plan on attending them. They're, they're great. They have them different places in the state, but also at the, the conventions, at the school board conventions. And I've attended several of them and they are definitely invaluable.
And you might have guessed that Jay is an attorney, so. He definitely is speaking.
Specific, but I gotta say, uh, they've been informative and, and very interesting. So.
I think it's also worth mentioning that, uh, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, any contract negotiations also only in executive session. And any personnel, uh, discussion whatsoever in, uh, in executive session.
Yeah, that's, that's the catchall phrase that I was mentioning before. Yes, I, I didn't mention contracts, but you're absolutely right. That would be also discussed in the executive session. Collective bargaining, for example.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, uh, I also, boy, some of the best chairs that, that. There's one right now, Weevetuck, who is terrific. Um, and what they're really good at is making sure no one person takes the whole floor. And, uh, talks to everyone, uh, so that, such that no one else can speak. And in fact, they make sure that, that everyone speaks. They go, you know, John, what do you think? Mary, what do you think? And invites everyone because they're quiet people who join boards and, uh, and you want to make sure everyone has a chance to. You know, they're there and they should be part of the conversation.
And somebody asked about unmuting and, um, is having trouble with a, with a, um. And it wants to ask a question. I want to, I want to help her.
That was me. That was me. And I, I figured it all out.
Yeah.
I got a new computer and how to get all the little things worked out.
I was going to read the question, see if somebody here could help you because I, you know, you're here and you want to get your question answered. Go ahead.
Uh, I guess, uh, I was interested in just learning about what happens as a board member. What's the time commitment like? Um, you know, meetings, uh, workload outside of, uh, the meeting process during the calendar year. Um, so sort of in a very general way, I was wondering what the, what the job is like.
Good, excellent question.
Anybody can answer that, but.
You know, you've probably said the least and.
So, yeah, sure. I, I could talk about that. Sure. Um, we have a, a board meeting every two weeks, uh. Usually on a Monday or Tuesday night, they usually start around. You know, six o'clock for executive session and the meeting, uh, might start at seven and. Go anywhere from like eight thirty to nine to ten o'clock on the outside, but that's pretty rare. I'd say. You know, they're usually a few hours long. Um, you get the agenda for the meeting. Um, the Friday before, they have to be posted, uh, by five o'clock on the Friday before the meeting for the public. We get it a few hours early so we can look at it. Ask any questions, uh, ask for any clarification on agenda items. Look at the supporting document because you get the agenda. And then if there are any reports that are, uh, on the agenda. You know, you can look at those supplementary materials and go through them and on your own time and at your own pace and have time to ask questions about them. If there are policies that are going to be, uh, read at the meeting and discussed, the policies will be attached and you can read those. So. Um, you know, you, you do want to look at the, you always look at the meeting agenda before the meeting and. Make sure you're ready to ask any questions you have or, uh, that you'll at least understand what's being discussed and why they're discussed. We typically also get a communication with the superintendent every Friday, uh. Or at least at some point over the weekend in the form of like Friday notes where the superintendent will lay out. Uh, important information about what's going on in the district. Usually they will involve. Um, any personnel matters, uh, curriculum instruction matters, uh, financial matters, uh. Uh, you know, anything that they think it's important for us to know about. I mean, it's just a one-way communication from the superintendent. It's not a discussion because that. Would violate, uh, open meetings law. So it's literally just the superintendent giving us pertinent information each week. Um, and as was alluded to earlier, there are different committees, uh, that board members serve on. Um, I'm serving on the policy committee, so we meet. Uh, once a month for a couple of hours in, in the afternoon and go over policies that are either, um. Up for review to be revised or some policies are, um. Uh, retired if they're outdated policies. Um, we also sometimes look at, uh, draft policies that we would like the board. That have come up that the board should, uh, consider adopting policy. So that's another, uh, use of, of our time. So. You know, if you're on a committee, you usually have, uh, about three meetings during the month, formal meetings, but you'll spend time. Uh, you know, might have questions, you might, uh, call the superintendent or email the superintendent or, um, you know, call the board president to bring something up to talk about. And you, you might also just spend time reviewing other, uh, information, especially around budget time. You might spend time. Looking through the budget in some detail, seeing what questions you might have before. Uh, public presentations or before the board adopts the budget, you know, you will have things you want to ask about. So. Um, the, you know, it is a time commitment. Um, you know, I knew that going in. It, I, I think it's a manageable time commitment. It's not, you know, I, I would say to anybody who's considering running for the board that. Um, you know, it's, it's something that's going to take up a, a significant amount of your time, but you know. If you, if that sounds like a ballpark estimation of time you have. Um, you know, that, that I do think it's a reasonable, um, a reasonable time commitment for the impact that you can have and how important the job is.
Thank you. And, um, John, if, if, don't go away because I have a question for you too, John Quigley. Um, if you're, oh, good. Um. And Cindy actually asked me to ask you this and I'm curious too. What, would you explain what the Board of Election does do, even though it's not as much as with most elections? And, um, and then also what, you know, what, what you've learned from watching this process that you might want to share with the group?
So, um, what we do, at least here in Ulster County, and what I can speak to is. Traditionally speaking, we will work with our school boards to provide them with the necessary equipment to actually have their election function. I can't say this is the case in every county around New York State. There are school districts that have some good working relationship with their board of elections. There are some school districts that don't have. Uh, too good of a relationship with their board of elections. But what I can say is if there is a school board out there that's having trouble running their elections, they can always reach out to. Uh, their board of elections first, or even our board of elections here in Ulster County. Uh, we have been helpful in helping get. Orange County and some Duchess County school districts, uh, direct contacts to vendors who provide voting equipment. Or even, uh, poll books and just the necessary equipment to run the physical election itself. Programming the ballots, getting them up to par so that when it's time to vote, they actually have the ballot and all that equipment needed. Uh, here in Ulster County, we do a good job working with all of our, um, our, all of our school districts and we enjoy that working relationship with them. We provide them with the voter list. So similar to any requests that might come in from the public. If there are ever any individuals who are.
If there are ever any individuals who are seeking, uh, voter information for their school district, they can always reach out to their board of elections to request that information for the registered voters in their district. Uh, one little thing that is not like very well known, uh, and is that every school board election, just like there isn't in a regular election, is that there are voters who partake in voting via absentee, or what will now be known as absentee or early, early mail-in vote. Uh, and so school boards, uh, do reach out to us to request that information so that they can mail ballots to those uh, permanent absentee members who, uh, aren't, aren't able to make it to the poll sites to vote on election day, but would still like to partake in the process. Those are people who have a higher tendency to vote, especially, uh, just because the ballot's being mailed to their house and they have the ability to just mail it back on in. So those kind of lists and that kind of information is always available, either directly through the school board, because they do request and get that information from us or directly from us at the board of elections. Um, that's, that's our role, and that's how we, uh, see ourselves aiding these school districts in, in their successful elections. Uh, putting my hat on and watching this whole process play out from a dist- uh, from a distance of somebody who um, definitely wants to see more participation in government. Uh, I, I, I think it's no, no secret, uh, when it comes to school board elections, they're traditionally very low turnout in comparison to our, to our typical general election that takes place in November. Uh, and I always look forward to seeing how, uh, individuals, as well as organizations such as yourself, uh, can play a role to increase that voter turnout. And just by having these conversations, opening it up to the general public and ha- and making them more available, I think that you might see just a small tick uh, in, in increase in voters, depending on how far of a reach we have. Um, I mean, we love to say here, here in Ulster County, uh, doesn't matter what kind of election you have, we traditionally do have a higher turnout than the rest of, uh, our, our, our voter neighbors, uh, especially if you happen to be voting for a school board or a library vote in the Woodstock area. Uh, they definitely love to get out and vote. Uh, but, uh, we, that's my role. Uh, at the end of the day, I'm a fan of helping people participate in our democracy and getting them either access to running for office, getting on the ballot. Ballot access is the biggest mystery uh, to people when it comes to how to get involved. But after that's settled, then my attention fo- fully focuses on how do we help get people educated and out to vote? And I, I appreciate everything you guys are doing here this evening to sort of encourage that and build that relationship to do so.
And one of the problems that, that happened in boards of elections is partisanship. And I mentioned at the beginning that, uh, John is the Republican commissioner, the Democratic commissioner is, um, home on, um, with a new baby. And so she couldn't be here, but they worked together really well. And I would normally have sort of insisted on going out and finding a Democrat to with him, because they're all about having to have, you know, both present. But, um, I, I, you know, I know how well they work together and she would be here if she could be.
We, we definitely, uh, would agree with the sentiment that politics plays no role in school board elections. Uh, and we would, we would go as far as to say that it's nice, eh, in board of elections, it's a check and a balance. Uh, it require, there's two of us for every role, uh, regardless of party affiliation, uh, to sort of get through that process. Uh, but we do appreciate how, how school boards, uh, do their best to sort of just talk about the issues themselves and put forward qualified candidates to represent the school boards.
That, uh, when I've, I, I think I've worked on school board elections as a poll worker. So it wasn't a Democrat, they didn't, you don't require then, or no one requires then that there be a Democrat and a Republican present?
No.
The board of elections.
Thought about it, because I, we don't care either. We're nonpartisan and we, we don't like to think, think.
Jay's got the legal answer for you.
Well, just, just so everybody listening knows, um, the board of elections, of course, has auspices over elections in the state of New York, except school board elections. Everything John's talking about is how the board of elections is, is, is positioned to assist us. But if there's a contest, for example, over the election, the Commissioner of Education, who at this point in time is, is Commissioner Betty Rosa, uh, would make that decision, uh, with an appeal that would be sent to her. So the board of elections really has not, no role to play with respect to the way all this stuff works. And but for our big cities, where some of the elections, um, are, are, um, political in the sense that people run as Democrats or Republicans, um, in, in some of our larger cities, that is not the way it works and in the rest of the state. And, and as John said, and it's a beautiful thing, right? Because, um, i- it's not that, you know, uh, you know, Jiminy Cricket, the conscience tells us that politics should have no role in public education. In the state of New York, it doesn't generally. Uh, and that isn't the case in, in, in most other states. Uh, because quite frankly, what's great, great for kids, uh, really should not be whether you, one's a Democrat or a you know, or, or a Republican or anything in between. It, it's really about the public policy.
We're truly a vendor, so to speak, uh, to, to the school boards, uh, where we, we get contracted to help these school boards, uh, facilitate their elections throughout the, throughout the year. And when it comes to, um, running the elections, we even provide them with, uh, lists of inspectors who, who can help. Because they, they get certified, they get trained through the board of elections on how to, uh, go through the check-in process or run a poll site. And a lot of our school districts, they reach out to us, get those lists of inspectors who know how to run a poll site. And those are the ones who you see at your, uh, voting site for your school board election when you go through that process.
All right. Well, we are on our last minute or so. Is there a question, a quick question, or a, a burning statement that one of you wants to make who've been so helpful? What do you think, Jay? Did we cover the territory pretty well?
I think you did. I, I mean, I, I think the bottom line is everyone listening in, and, and I know this will be recorded, or it's being recorded, um, should feel as though, um, your time will be well spent. I know, um, uh, you know, there was a question, um, that Guido answered about the time that he spends as a school board member. Um, and, and, you know, it's going to depend on what district you're in. It depends on perhaps, w- w- if there's a crisis, right? If there's a crisis, we're going to be spending a, a lot more time, uh, but our kids are worth that time. I, I think it's really great to have this conversation tonight, because people should of course run for all the right reasons, as Nora indicated, and I agree. Uh, but they should also know that, um, oh, in advance that they have the time to do so. Because if they don't have the time, then perhaps they need to wait for another time in their life when perhaps, um, they are freed up to do this, because you, you don't want other responsibilities to do, to be the excuse a- as to why you're not serving the people who elected you.
Right. And we work at the state level too, in the league. And, um, and if you know, are watching the state level at all, you know how big an argument there is over the funding that goes to the schools. And you all, there's, how many did you say there are across the state's, um, board members?
Five thousand.
Yeah, that's a, and you were responsible for that, that money that's being spent, that is being fought, uh, and in Albany. So it's a huge responsibility and it's really great to be.
And a lot of local money too, because beyond what Albany is raising, we're, we're, we're mostly raising local tax dollars. And we all know, uh, everybody on the screen knows that our taxpayers work really hard for their money. Uh, and sometimes it's not a question about whether they support public education. Sometimes they just don't have the ability to support it in the way that it needs to. So being very, you know, fiscally, um, you know, cognizant of how things work is super, super important on behalf of those citizens.
All right.
Dear, if I, if I may mention real quickly, um, you know, in terms of how much time it's going to be an individual, uh, commitment on your part, what you can commit. And, um, also you can get, you can get really, really involved, or you can, you know, be there and do your basic responsibilities. And of course, it's all really important, any of your contribute, uh, your contributions. Um, the other, the other thing, as people are talking, I wanted to mention that if you in any way say, oh, that's only for smart people. Look at all this terminology that's being thrown around. I don't know any of this parliamentary procedure. I don't, I've heard of that, but I don't know what that means, or means for rubber tools and so on. Y- you'll learn, you'll learn. Uh, the, the terminology you're hearing is from people who have, uh, uh, gone through that experience. You'll ask all kinds of questions of your colleagues, uh, you know, how does this work? How does that work? Um, NISBA is a tremendous resource. Um, so don't let that be intimidated, intimidating. If you really feel that you have something to offer and you want to serve the community in this way, then, you know, then do it, then do it. It's not that only you know, Mensa candidates join school boards. It's, it's open for everyone. It's, it's an inviting way to, to serve kids and serve the community. So don't let that hold you back at all.
And I've seen that with my own eyes when I go back to a district to moderate. And somebody that was brand new and knew nothing in the candidates meeting earlier comes, you know, you go back and wow, are they smart? You know, they've learned all this from being, and I know so much of it comes from that early training that they get.
And you know what, dear, I just wanted to say that, that in, in terms of being smart, smart doesn't necessarily mean that you know the entire alphabet suit, soup. It's, it's about, do you know your community? Can you advocate at the table for what they want? Because that's really what you're all about. This whole system was set up not to be an elitist system, right? It's great. We have doctors and lawyers and, and other professionals on school boards, but we al- also have people who are not at that specific level, and it was intended that way. So everyone in our community, uh, can have a voice.
I did want to raise that before we get off too, because, um, all the people that are here that are, um, representing school board members um, are, have been in the educational system, and that's not always true. Um, they're all former teachers, right? All of you have taught and, and, um, and so it'd be nice to know that you could do it without having come.
Now, yeah, I mean, from a statewide perspective, there, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but I can honestly tell you, it's not a majority of people who are formerly teachers. There's a lot of teachers, uh, for all the right reasons. They, they have a lot of knowledge. Uh, but that is not the, the mainstay of all of our school board members by any means.
That's what I wanted to know, because, uh, that I, you know, we didn't try to ask people their backgrounds and that's why they're on. It's just really good people who care about this topic. So.
I, I think it's also.
Thank you all. Yes, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One more thing to interrupt. Um, coming off of Jay's note that it's, you know, it's set up to not be an elitist, you know. I think the greatest challenge that you have when serving on a board is to be able to look at different, look at a problem, look at different options and possibilities and details within that, the nuances, and then make, uh, an intelligent, uh, uh, decision based on all these considerations. So being open to learning things and hearing someone else's idea, that's the greatest challenge. You don't have to know everything. Uh, uh, you you just have to think and, and.
Yeah. And that's what I see too, the growth in, in just maturity of, of working with a team and all that you see after people have been on a school board for a while. And that's really nice. Nora, last word from you.
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, many school boards, uh, do their own orientation in addition to the training that the state provides that's required within the first twelve months. And you could be removed from the board if you don't do your training in a timely, uh, fashion. I would, I would recommend that you do it as, as soon as possible. And if your district offers orientation in addition to that for new board members, please go with an open mind. And some districts also assign mentors to new trustees. All of them are helpful. All of those things are helpful.
That's great. Oh, what a great panel. Thank you so much. Guido, do you want a last word? The others got it.
Uh, no, not really. I think they covered everything really well. I would encourage anyone who's thinking about running, uh, to do so. It's a great experience. And schools need really good people to serve on boards. So thanks for your interest.
Great way to end. Okay. All right. Thank you all so much.
Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, dear.
Yeah. Here. Hi, Sheba. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, take care.
You too.